Okay, my computer's telling me it's seven o'clock. So I'm going to call the public hearing to order for January 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is, uh, these are two public hearings. Both of them are on similar projects. Will the secretary, Kim, would you read the notices, please?
Kathy, because of the Novell coronavirus pandemic and state and federal bans on large meetings in pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order 202 dot one issued on March 12th, 2020, suspending the law to allow the attendance of meetings telephonically or by other similar services. The Town of Batavia Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom video conference hall instead of public meeting open for the public to attend in person. Minutes of the meeting will be posted on the Town of Batavia website. You may access the meeting and public hearing for January 19th, 2021 by meeting number 957-9958-9718. The password is 605901. Phone access is 1646-558-8656 in New York. Notice of public hearing, Truesdale Solar LLC. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application for a special use permit by Truesdale Solar LLC for the installation of an 18.2 acre, 5 megawatt ground mounted commercial solar system at 5117 Elickett Street Road in the town of Batavia. This is in an agricultural residential A dash R district. Said hearing will be held electronically via Zoom video conference instead of a public meeting on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, at which time all interested persons will be heard. In order to facilitate the Zoom meeting, we urge written comments or questions to be emailed to the chairman@kjesinski@townofbatavia.com or placed in the town hall drop box prior to January 18th. All comments and questions will be read at the meeting by order of the Town of Batavia Planning Board, Kathleen Jezinski, Chairman. Kathy, would you like me to read the second public hearing notice?
No, please. If you would, would you read just the notices given and the one paragraph? Because the two projects are a little different. Thank you.
This one is Truesdale Solar LLC. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application for a special use permit by Truesdale Solar LLC for the installation of a 19.6 acre, 4 megawatt ground mount commercial solar system at 5117 Elickett Street Road in the town of Batavia. This is in an agricultural residential A dash R district. Do you want me to read the second paragraph too?
That's fine. Thank you, Kim.
You're very welcome.
Now, I'm going to ask Jerry Leone to make a short presentation. He's the developer and he'll let you know exactly what we're talking about tonight. Go ahead, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you mind sharing, allowing me to share my screen? It's currently disabled.
Received from Todd and Colleen Hanny.
Can we do that, Sarah? We have a moderator who's doing this for me. She's working on it.
No problem.
Do you know how to do it, Jerry? Maybe you could tell us.
It says allow one participant can share at a time. I don't know.
My side, it says host disabled.
Here we go. I got it.
Okay.
Should let you do it now.
Fantastic. Okay, can folks see my screen okay?
Yes.
And can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm a little under the weather, so I apologize upfront for my voice. Thank you all for the opportunity this evening to present our projects to you. My name is Jerry Leone. I'm a civil engineer with Cypress Creek. I'm located in Rochester, New York. This evening, I'd like to give you some details and some facts about our projects. As was noted previously, the size can be seen here between the two projects. So let me move on. This is actually not the slide deck. We're a company that's based in Santa Monica, California. I'm just going to close this, Kathy, and keep talking. We're based in Santa Monica, California, is our corporate office. We have other offices in North Carolina and a, about 350 employees across the country. We have a sizable portfolio of development in New York State. Our projects, at least close to home in Batavia, we've developed several projects across New York. And I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get this back up. Close to home, we have the Pearl Street projects that we've developed already with the town. Those projects were completed as part of the current zoning requirements. We've also completed projects, here we go, get this back up again, in Canandaigua, in Geneva, in Walcott, Sodas, Wheatland, and nearby in Abon. Sorry, folks, I'm having a little difficulty here. Let's go back to this. Okay. So here's the map of our work product in New York State, across the state. These are the projects that I just noted to you that we've had success in developing and operating regionally. So to highlight our projects, these are both community solar projects through National Grid. What that means is basically a discounted electric supply can be made available to consumers, electric consumers within National Grid's local service territory. So in order to buy discounted electric, the project does not have to be on anyone's property or on their roof. This gives an opportunity for folks away from the supply to produce, or excuse me, purchase discounted supply. I noted previously, we have experience working with the town. I'll point out that our projects will provide revenue streams to the town, to the county, and the school district through the tax base. And we ultimately will have some experience working with Genesee County IDA on the development of a pilot project for our work previously within the town. We propose a pollinator friendly seed mix as part of our project. I'll get into that here in a bit more detail. And that's our partnership with Cornell University. And then we propose some additional screening, visual screening. So the Pollinator Initiative, we've been very successful with. Just in simple terms, this is a seed mix that's very friendly to bee species. So you can see here, the hives are located in fairly close proximity to the array. And again, we've had a lot of success with this initiative. So these are the two projects. As a reference, here's the city of Batavia over here in the bottom left. The projects are located southeast of the city at, as noted previously, on Elickott Street. So we have the two projects noted here. They are both separate. They both have separate driveways. They both have separate interconnections. This is one here and the other one here. So they very much are distinctly two separate projects. We are proposing a tracking system. The benefits to this system is they're more efficient than a fixed system. So you might be familiar with the system along the thruway in Batavia. That is a fixed system, whereas in this case, we're proposing a tracker. So you could see these nominally sit a little bit under seven feet off the ground on a single axle, and they rotate with the sun. So as the sun is coming across the horizon, the panel will follow the sun and becomes more efficient in that regard. And this here will just show you a typical configuration of what that would look like from a profile view. So the process that we're involved with for these projects, just to give you all an idea, we start by identifying a location and ultimately proceed with the design and the permitting, which we're talking about this evening. There will be a component, of course, where we will purchase and procure the equipment that's needed. The financing is involved. We proceed with construction. I'll point out for folks in the general public that this is a project, these projects are producing direct current, and we're using inverters, which you can see here, to convert from a direct current to an alternating current. So a direct current, just familiarity, would be like a car battery in an automobile. And of course, alternating current would be electricity that comes into our homes. The interconnect is equally as important as the design in the permitting. And we've completed all of the necessary studies and steps with National Grid for both projects to allow interconnection of them to their local system right in near proximity to the site. And then ultimately, the site would go into operation and maintenance. So wanting to point out here, the permitting piece, we want to ensure that our projects are designed as mandated by the code and also consistent with the town's feedback. I'm going to stop here, Ms. Chairman, and just suggest to you that I have provided a document to you in hopes that the public will have access to this. This is noted as an independent source from the State of Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. This is very much a focus on environmental considerations for projects. There was a resident that expressed some interest in learning more, for example, about the potential for these panels to leach materials into the ground. This document, in this particular section, goes into a discussion about that particular matter. So I'm hopeful that this document will satisfy your interest in that particular component of our project. And then, folks, you can see there's other attributes relating to the environment that might be of interest to you. So, Ms. Chairman, I'm going to stop there in sharing my screen and again, appreciate the opportunity for us to present these to you this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jerry. And at the end, if you want to do a short summary, if you've heard some things that you might want to just do a short summary for, we'll allow that.
Okay, if it's okay with the board, what I might propose is that we put together a more formal response to the comments that are raised this evening that we could provide to the board with descriptive responses to our, to the comments that are raised, if that's acceptable.
Well, it certainly is, and that's what we'll use to help us decide how to go forward with the project.
Fantastic.
We've got some guidelines for the meeting tonight. First of all, I want to introduce Sarah Socka. Sarah is moderating tonight. The first thing she's going to do is call on people and ask them if they want to speak, so she can make a list of speakers. Everyone will have an opportunity. Sarah will call your name and let you know when it's your time to speak. You'll have three to five minutes. Please state your name before you start for the secretary. And then the moderator will know you, will let you know when your time is up. Afterwards, I'll ask if anyone else has information or questions that have not yet been brought up. And if so, you would raise your hand and keep it raised until Sarah calls on you again. There will be no questions and answers. This is strictly for input to the planning board to help us make decisions. Dan Partridge, who is a property owner, is a member of this board. He will not be participating tonight. I will appoint our alternate member, Steve Tanner, in his place. Now, this may take a couple minutes, but Sarah's going to call on people and get a list for speakers. Are you ready to do that, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead. If you need me, let me know.
Okay. Just got to wait one more. So there's someone with the name Kathleen's iPad. I'm going to ask to unmute you, and if you could say your name and if you would like to speak, or I guess if you would like to speak. Would you like to speak?
I'm sorry. New it.
No, that's okay. Just making a list, would you?
Go ahead.
Kathy Antonelli. I spoke the last couple of times, so if, to reserve time for other people that'd like to speak, I would be happy to pass along to the next person. But I am opposed to the solar farm going directly behind our houses.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. If you decide later you have something to say, you can't raise your hand, but hopefully you can get our attention.
So, well, I guess the question is, is after this public hearing tonight, will you be making a decision during this meeting, or?
Oh, no.
What is the protocol here?
We have, we have to take some time to consider this. We probably won't be doing anything on this until the second meeting in February.
Okay, because I do know that you have a meeting tomorrow night regarding a moratorium.
Now, that would be the town board. This is the planning board.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Sarah.
Person with just iPad, I think that's Brian Quinn, would you like to speak?
No, thank you.
Morrow family, would you like to speak?
Sure.
Thank you.
You guys keep popping these solar fields up all over Genesee County. How come we're not taking into consideration the looks of them or the property value? Good example would be State Street Road. You put one up in front of all these houses. You got a fence, you got solar panels up. How come there's no berms or trees or some type of synthetic that would give it more natural look? I was concerned about, you know, this stuff leaching in the field last time. Jerry, thanks for bringing this up and sending out your article. But can you take a look at the community and maybe, you know, like Walmart put up a berm and trees? You don't see Walmart till you get onto the commercial end. We're out in the country here. If you bring your map back up, Jerry, these people can look right at this solar field in their backyard. Is that what you want to look at? I mean, no one's come up with what's it doing to the value of property? I don't think anybody's put that on the table. One guy said that, oh, it increases it. Well, how does it increase it? That's what I'd like to know about it. If we can look at the synthetics of the looks of these things.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. I'm sure that you can, if you attend our meeting when we do our SEACER environmental review, you may get some of your answers.
Okay.
Now, what Sarah's doing now is only getting a list, and then she will call on people. So if you would just give your name when she calls on you, then we'll go on and get comments.
I'm not supposed to talk again. I did that last meeting. Sorry.
Well, you can, if you really want to again, you have to raise your hand.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, let's see. Caitlin Rochey, would you like to speak?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mary McCabe Skelton, would you like to speak?
No, thank you.
The name on here is VK8104G, would you like to speak?
And can you also give us your name?
Yes.
You'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay, better?
Yes.
Okay, good. It's Nancy Brock, B-R-A-C-H. And yes, I would like to speak, and I also sent a video and an article and a map and an email.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen's iPad, would you like to speak and please state your name?
Oh, yes, I'm Kathleen Antonelli. And, you know, I, I think that several of us that are on and are concerned about this is in that, you know, we've tried to talk about, we understand that these things have to go in, but.
This isn't your time to speak, Kathleen. Could you just give your name and Sarah will call on you?
Kathleen Antonelli.
Thank you.
Name is David, would you like to speak? Please state your name if you do want to speak.
I'm okay. I don't need to speak. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you. Jeff Johnson, would you like to speak?
Hi there. No, I am with Cypress Creek as well and just supporting Jerry as an observer tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Name is Todd, would you like to speak and please state your name?
Yes, I will speak. My name is Todd Hanny, H-A-N-N-E-Y.
And we have phone number 585-356-9340. To unmute, you're going to want to press star six. And if you would like to speak, please state your name.
This is Supervisor Greg Post. My job is to listen this evening.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you. And we have Jim Taravella, would you like to speak?
Oh, thank you.
Is there anybody I missed? If so, please turn your video on and raise your hand.
Okay, well, whoops, is there somebody?
Nope, I just went through the video. Nope.
Okay. We now have our list together, so Sarah's going to call on you, and everyone will have the opportunity to speak. If you do decide you want to speak and you haven't, we'll give you that opportunity at the end. So go ahead with the, with the public hearing, Sarah.
Kathy, it's Dan Lang. Just wanted to ask real quick, I see that we also have a Mary McCabe Skelton on. And I'm not sure if that one was bypassed as far as speaking or not, but if.
Nope, I got to her.
Okay, excellent. I didn't have that one online, so it must have cut out. I just wanted to verify and make sure everybody's getting that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, first is Kathleen Antonelli.
Yes, I have spoken before regarding this and that I understand that, you know, we need to look at alternative energy sources. And solar farms seem to be the, the big thing that everybody is putting in. My concern is that it's so close to our homes with all the farmland that's out there. Why is it that it's got to be that close to our homes? Why is it so big when we're putting two solar farms right next to each other? Especially now that I, I saw the drawing that Jerry put up that was, makes it even look worse than what I had anticipated in terms of what I'll be looking at in my backyard. I have questions regarding the efficiency of it. We have many, many gray days. There is no sunlight. I don't see for the residents what the advantage is for us in terms of energy or what we get out of the whole thing. So I'm very much opposed to it being directly behind our houses. And I'm not sure what can be done about it, but I wanted to voice my opinion regarding that. I also do think that it will depreciate my value of my home if I do decide that I need to sell my house. I don't, I think it would be very hard to market homes with those big solar panels right there. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Kathleen, for your input.
Okay, we have Morrow family. Please state your name.
Yeah, it's Tim Morrow. I think I spoke a few minutes ago before my turn to speak and brought my concerns to you guys as into the way you're putting these up, the way they look throughout the county. I don't see any natural, yeah, you got flowers inside the fence, but everybody drives by these. Is there any way to put up berms? Make sure we're safe, make sure we're not leaching into the aquifer that's underneath the ground here like we had in the past? I mean, I don't think you guys are looking at the full picture 15 years down the road when you guys are off the board. Who's taking over and who's going to watch out for these projects? I'd really like you to look into it to make it more friendly looking. Some berms up by the road, some trees, so you can't see it from 63. Maybe behind the houses that are directly there that can see it. Maybe you need some cover up that way. Beyond that, yes, you got nothing but farm fields and woods behind there where people can't see it. I think you should take that into consideration. And I'm with Kathy on the value of my home. If I decide to sell, what, what value is it going to do to my house? Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, Nancy Brock.
Yes, I, Kathy, you said that they would read my letter. Is that still the plan?
Well, it's up to you. I have it in front of me or you probably have it in front of you. Would you like to read it?
I've got it on my tiny little phone if you don't mind reading it. And then there's just two other things I would say. The one is, like the, like folks are saying, can we do some berms and things like that? And the second one is, how close can it be to people's houses? Is it seventy-five feet?
Okay, is that all you have for questions?
Um, you know, plus my letter, but I'm, yeah, okay, so then you, you, you're gonna get back to me on this, on the question about how far away it can be. Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, now Nancy presented this to us. Renewable energy is not an efficient, safe, reliable energy source. It requires large quantities of non-renewables and rare earth materials. Mining foreign refining these items consumes massive amounts of conventional energy. Disposal of these relatively short-lived materials is an environmental challenge, to say the least. We have an inexhaustible supply of hydrocarbons that are easier to acquire, cheaper, more reliable, cleaner and more economically friendly. Renewable energy can cost more than twice as much as conventional energy sources. To enrich solar companies and landowners, middle-class folks pay higher costs for utilities. They pay local, state and federal taxes that are used not only for subsidies, but for other costs of implementing and cleaning up after these projects. They lose the enjoyment of their property and the beautiful country environment they choose to live in when they bought their homes. This would not be so discouraging if there was a benefit to renewable energy. But if it costs more, is less efficient, results in environmental disposal and manufacturing problems. Five hundred years to make enough batteries to store one day's worth of energy. Why would we possibly promote or encourage it? We need to care about the people who will be left to live with the decisions we are making today. Now Nancy, you go ahead and comment on that.
Yeah, I just, there's a lot of information that really doesn't get out there because solar and wind are renewable energies and everyone thinks it's just wonderful and it's green and it's low cost. But it costs more and it does a lot of other things that are not being publicized. And in many cases, you know, it's the politics of looking green that takes precedence over the reality of the extra costs and the, the damage to the ecology and so many other things. And I did send that video. I'm guessing you could make that available to anyone who was interested in watching it. But, um, but there's just a lot, there's just a lot of things that are, that people are not aware of and that they need to be made aware of. And I listed just a few of them. So thanks for listening. Thanks for reading it, Kathy.
You're welcome and thank you for participating.
Oh, certainly.
All right. We have Todd Hanny.
Yes, hello. Um, the comments I have are two-pointed. First off, is the planning board gonna seek like in writing assurances from National Grid? That a peak sunny day when they're laying down nine-plus megawatts of power under the little power line in front of my house? That I'm not going to have any voltage irregularities or other problems? Is National Grid gonna give me that in writing? I already have a line monitor, so I'll keep an eye on it myself. And who is liable if there's damages and whatnot from voltage spikes and stuff on this line? In all probability, they're using the cheapest Chinese string inverters available on the solar farm. I'm not very confident in the performance of them and their line conditioning, frequency maintaining, everything else. I have a lot of questions about that. And I think the board should definitely seek information from an outside party, not Cypress Creek, about who's responsible for any problems that arise from this. That's my first big concern. Then I support the other neighbors. It's not right in my backyard. It's across the street. But we moved out to a more country rural area not to have a large industrial development across the street from us. You know, it, I didn't see anything in any of these drawings about, as everybody was asking for, some type of cover, trees, burns, anything to help the overall degradation of the view of the landscape around. You know, obviously Cypress Creek and Mr. Partridge are more than willing to take advantage of all the government handouts and putting in a questionable economically viable solar farm. And it's at the expense of everyone that lives around us. I really think the town planning board should look into these things. I'm really not, I'm not anti-solar at all, actually, or renewable. But I have questions about the grid connection that they're utilizing on a relatively small rural feeder line. And I have questions about degradation of property values. And it, it really just looks like a money grab at the state taxpayers' expense to me. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
That was the last one on our list.
Okay, well, that went pretty quick. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? We certainly have heard a lot tonight. If you can't raise your hand, you can unmute yourself and just let us know who you are. If you wish to add anything or if something hasn't been said. Well, hearing nothing more, I'm going to, to thank you all for participating. I want you to know that the planning board has been working for several months on this, working with the town staff. And now we're, we're learning as much as we can about it. We have to do an environmental seeker that will be coming up and then we will consider a special use permit. Now, when someone gets a special use permit, the planning board does all that they can to, if they approve the project, to make it fit in the neighborhood and to do what we can to make it presentable to everyone. So we will be working on that. We will be, certainly, if you have anything more to tell us, let us know. And you're welcome to come to all our meetings. We, it will be advertised. It'll be in the paper and I'll be sending out agendas. You can call the town hall if you want any more information. And if you'd like to look at Mr. Leon's information, you can call the town hall and make an arrangement.
And Kathy, what did you, what did we decide? Was the distance from the houses, was it, what, how many feet was it?
We did not say, we did not say that because I don't know and we'll have to get someone to tell you that does know.
Thank you.
You will get an answer to that, Nancy.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, anything else?
Ms. Chairman, may I just jump back in for a moment here? I wanted to thank everyone for their thoughtful comments. We have taken detailed notes and as noted, we will certainly provide responses. In the interest of the folks here this evening and the fact that there was a fair amount of questions about visual impacts, I think it would be prudent if I could share with you all this last slide. I did make note in an earlier slide that we are proposing visual, visual screening areas. And I just wanted to point out to you, for the interest of those folks that have mentioned it this evening, we are proposing screenings on the far left, west end of the project is noted here, as well as screenings in the middle of the project noted here. And then the screenings also be on the far eastern end of the project noted here. So just for reference, this was the first interconnection point for the first project. And then this is the interconnection point for the second. Again, this is on the western edge and this is on the eastern edge. I call your attention quickly to what these look like. These landscape buffers, if you will, will provide screening. We have considerable experience with these types of installations. And these will include evergreens and shrubs, as you can see down here in the bottom. So thank you for, again, for the opportunity and I thought it'd be fruitful to share this with you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, I'm now going to close the both public hearings. That does not mean that we won't consider any comments that you have later. But this is the end of our public hearings tonight. Thank you so much for participating. We are now going to go into our regular agenda for the planning board. Whoops. Oh, I, I lost you for a minute. Okay, we're gonna go into our regular planning board meeting. So I'm now calling the regular planning board meeting to order for the Tuesday, January nineteenth meeting. Kim, could you call, roll call, please?
Yes, Kathy. Paul Marcasey.
Here.
Paul McCullough. Paul McCullough.
Here.
Lou Paganello. Don Partridge.
I'm here and I will recuse myself for the rest of the meeting, too.
Thank you, Don. Jeremy Lyles.
Here.
Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner.
Here.
Brooks Holly.
Here.
You're all set, Kathy.
Okay, I'm designating both alternate members as voting members tonight in place of Lou Paganello and Don Partridge. Did everyone have a chance to look at the minutes of January fifth? They were sent out to you?
I'll make a motion to approve, Paul McCullough.
Second, Steve Tanner.
Okay, motion by Paul, second advice D. Are there any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much. The first thing on our agenda tonight is setting a public hearing. We have an application by Janice Smith for a special use permit. We haven't considered this project yet, but we do need to set a public hearing. Dan, can you tell us about the project, Dan Lang? Dan Lang?
Yes, I can. Just a little bit of a lag here. Just to give you a, a basic of the project and Kathy did receive it last week. It did go to county already. Janice Smith is proposing to take an existing structure, which is a, a larger pole barn, and turn into an event venue for, let's say, a wedding or whatnot. So it is out in the country. It's on Creek Road. There are no neighbors other than her mother and father who also live in Florida for most of the year within five-hundred-foot notice. Other than that, it's all farmland around there. In, in a nutshell, we, she'd have to be dealing with Bruce, Matt, Jamie and I more than, more than anything on getting the assembly up to building code standards. Have we had this in the past? No, it's something fairly new to the town of Batavia. I know there's quite a few other municipalities that are doing larger venues and pole barns or barns, whether it be a wedding, a birthday party, retirement party. This is a venture that is not going to be every night, every day. It's, it's going to be when they get somebody to come in and want to do that. In a nutshell, that would, that would be what we're setting the public hearing for. They have provided the landscape showing egress and ingress, showing all fire apparatus access road. The county did, did recommend with approval, with modifications, just showing more clarity in the parking because it's such a big area out there. We don't have, as far as staff, we don't have any major concerns at this time in regards to the venue being proposed. That's something that you guys can review during the, the interim until we have the public hearing and so forth. That would just be it in a nutshell.
Okay, I entertain a motion to set a public hearing for the special use permit.
John Long, so moved.
Motion by John. Is there a second? Paul Marcasey.
Paul Marcasey.
Roll call, please, Kim.
Anderson.
Yes.
Paul Marcasey.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Jeremy Lyles.
Yes.
Steve Tanner.
Yes.
Brooks Holly.
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski.
Yes. Okay, that will be on our, our agenda for February second. Okay, the next thing we have, an application by Batavia Solar for a special use permit to install a ground-mounted solar system at the Genesee Gateway Local Development Corporation on our Stephen Holly Drive, drive. We need to set a public hearing. This is also going to require a special use permit. Dan, you want to tell us anything about that?
There we go. Dan Lang, once again, just to give you a brief overview of this, it's roughly a ten-acre solar farm. It will be located next to Med Tech, which is in a P U D. I have talked to the town attorney on this and we are reviewing as well. It did also go to the county. It did get approval. But we do have a few things to shore up, whether or not this will need town board approval or if it's an accessory structure to the principal use, which is something I am dealing with Andrew Meyer, our town attorney, on right now. Once I receive more information on that, I will direct that to Kathy and she can pass that along to the rest of the board.
Thanks, Dan, because that was one of the questions I asked you earlier by email. So that's, that's good to know.
You got it, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I entertain a motion for the, the public hearing, which we would also have on February second.
Paul, so moved.
Paul McCullough, motion. Is there a second?
Second, Bruce Holly.
Bruce Holly. Roll call, please, Kim.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Paul Marcasey.
Yes.
Whoops, sorry, Brooks. Brooks Holly.
Yes.
Steve Tanner.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Jeremy.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to be busy at our next meeting. Next on our agenda is the zoning enforcement officer report. We've got Dan and Bruce both here. So Dan, what have you got for us?
Aside from what I gave you, I don't think I have anything else to update the board on. I, I think the meeting tonight has gone very well, being our first public hearing via Zoom. So thanks, everybody, for making that go as smooth as we can. I will be working, once we get out of the meeting. At some point this week, I'll get with Sarah or I will review this myself, get the questions together from the staff standpoint that any of the residents have that I can help answer, and I will help answer those two prior to the next meeting. So we can be prepared and have those concerns and, and they were all valid points addressed. And I know that Mr. Leon, I'm sure, will be working on everything on his end of it. So he can, he can put together response as well. But overall, I don't have anything else to report and thank you.
Thank you. Bruce, have you got anything for us? Is Bruce still here?
I don't see him here. I know he was having trouble getting kicked in and out, so.
Yeah, I don't see him, Kathy.
Okay, under chairman report, I just want to congratulate all of you. Our practice sessions went well, our first public hearing went well, and now we've got two of them next week, or next meeting. So, well, we should be very good at this before we're done. That's all I have to say. We will have two meetings next month, so be prepared for that. Okay, does anyone have anything for the meeting before we re-adjourn? Brooks?
All right, this is Brooks Holly, like, motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
By Steve Tanner. All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
You want, anyone opposed? No? Thank you very much. It was a good meeting and you all worked hard. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.